Everybody, good afternoon. Thank you all for being here. This is a special meeting of the Board of Education and the school district of Superior. Roll call.
Nick Olson.
Here.
Nick Schumacher.
Here.
Brooke Taylor.
Here.
Dya Smith.
Here.
Here, President Olson.
Here. We have met compliance with official notification. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business. It is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is a time for comments by members of the public during the meeting as indicated on the agenda. That time may be limited by board action. Members of the public wishing to address the board on any of the topics included on today's agenda may do so by completing a public comment sign up sheet and handing it to the deputy clerk. Any comments involving personally identifiable information about students, staff, or administration is not allowed. Comments should be respectful, focused on the items being considered by the board, and will be restricted to three minutes in length. At this time, I know that many of you walked by the sign up sheet. Is anybody here that still wishes to address the board this afternoon? So we will move to the public comments section then of today's meeting. Our first speaker is Ray Coz. I would ask the board at this time if you will waive the three minute limit and let the speakers finish what they have to present.
Geez, I would have prepared totally different than. Get this one to three minutes. I appreciate it. Thanks. I hope to be done in three minutes. I'm sorry to repeat myself. I'll apologize to start with some things I'm about to say. I shared at the board meeting on Monday and I emailed the board members and I appreciate the responses that I got from some of you. I came to the Monday's board meeting with a feeling of lack of transparency and communication by the district with the proposal to remove retirees from the district insurance. I had many questions. I left the board meeting Monday with even more unanswered questions and a greater sense of the district's lack of transparency and communication. An example of this lack of transparency is when the administration shared a significant cost saving quote that showed with retirees, but when questioned was in fact not with retirees, it was removing retirees to Cobra Insurance for eighteen months and then dropping them. It surprised me even more that the board seemed to be caught by surprise by the lack of transparency and communication with this new proposal, something that they were only made up days before the board meeting. I feel the administration fails to see how this decision will impact the district in the long term. This may be why the district is in financial situation it is now. I feel this proposal will not save the district money, but in fact burden it with more cost in the future. Retirees will not be removed for two years because the law requires the district to offer Cobra Insurance to them for eighteen months. So no savings will happen for two years. As staff lose their ability to purchase district insurance, they will force them to work longer before retiring. So instead of removing older staff from insurance, the district just caused them to stay on longer. This also means they will pay these staff salaries at the top of the pay scale and not allow the district to save money by replacing them with the staff at the bottom of the pay scale. Passports have grandfathered in staff when major insurance changes like this have happened. This is only fair since these people took salary cuts to maintain insurance benefits, which impacted them at the time and is now impacting them with lower pensions and lower social security. It is not fair to change these rules in the middle of the game. I do not support changing this policy, but if you do grandfather the retirees currently allowed this practice to continue. I ask the board to not forget your retirees. Approving this recommendation shows you do not care for us and the hard work and dedication we gave the district over our careers. I ask the board to keep Superior a destination district. The district people want to work for. Show your word is worth something and keep a promise made to retirees. Promise all retirees, um, excuse me, show your word is worth something and keep a promise made to retirees. A promise all retirees baser to retirement decision not. Do not take away a promise to retirees because of this administration's inability to keep the district financially sound. I've been told staff morale is extremely low right now with the cuts of twenty five teachers and forty support staff. Removing retirees from a promise made will sink morale even lower and erode the foundation that helped make Superior a great district, its staff and its retirees.
Thank you, Ray. Our next speaker, Mr. Joe Casparic.
Uh, it's gonna be a tough act to follow. Hey, Mr. Thanks for taking the time to listen to us. And I realize that financial situation right now is not good. The funding system in Wisconsin is broken and it needs to be fixed. With that said, here's the letter that I sent. While I understand that there are serious budget issues facing the district, I have some questions, concerns, and observations regarding the proposed changes to health and dental insurance. As recent retirees from the district, my wife and I are obviously concerned with the proposal to drop retired staff from the district insurance offerings. Some several questions come to mind. If removing retirees is intended to lower costs, where is the supporting data? We pay one hundred percent of our premiums now that we are retired. Are we truly more expensive as older individuals or is it just an actuarial supposition that doesn't look at the actual individuals involved? How much savings does it create and is it worth it? At what point does this become an age discrimination issue? When this was discussed three years ago, it was mentioned that there are cheaper options available. We did investigate and while there were options with lower premiums, it came with significantly higher deductibles and out of pocket costs, which made them more expensive overall. We are also unable to legally use any H R A money that is part of a retirement package from the district to pay for any of the subsidized A C A plans that are available. I did some research and some digging today quickly and looking at costs. Our premiums would, our costs overall between premiums, copays, deductibles are probably quadruple. For years, salaries stayed stagnant in exchange for keeping insurance costs somewhat under control, both for us and for the school district. That was a trade off we were willing to make to ensure that we had affordable insurance available to us into retirement. We, as I'm sure others, have planned our retirements with the understanding we would be able to stay on the district insurance as needed. I'm also concerned about the Essentia only proposal. What about the people using St. Luke's or other local options for other care? I understand the district does have a partnership with Essentia, but is this in the best interest of the district and the individuals involved? What other options are there? And I'll just close. I know that these are challenging times financially. I just ask that you consider all comments carefully and remember that you're affecting people, not just numbers.
She was looking for the sign up sheet. Are you looking for the sign up sheet?
I was.
Okay, can she add?
Yes.
Can you hear that?
Yes.
Um, I'm Kelly Canal and I am a language arts teacher at the middle school. And when I read through the proposals, I know we're in a tight spot and I don't want to dismiss that, but in two thousand and two, when I was only twenty six years old, I was diagnosed with ovarian cancer and the first doctor I saw was at Essentia. Had I listened to that doctor, I would probably be dead today. He misdiagnosed me. He blew me off because I was young. And I got a second opinion at St. Luke's and for me seeing that I no longer have that option unless I go to extreme financial burden on my family once again, in spite of all the financial burdens I've had to already go through as a young person having cancer, I'd be back in the same boat where I'd be in debt constantly, being sued by hospitals because I'm unable to pay those bills. And as a mom with five kids, there is no way that I think it's fair that I should have to change my doctor and potentially put my own life at risk again because of money, because that's what we're looking at. And those three hundred some families that use St. Luke's, those are relationships we've built with doctors over many, many years. I've had my doctor and my clinic established now since I was twenty six years old. And the fact that I would potentially have to change it is just mind boggling to me to be put in that position. I will have to give up things in my family in order to feel that my healthcare is properly being taken care of and that just feels completely unfair and it's a really hard thing to face. I just don't think it's a burden that should be put on us because those three hundred some families and those relationships we have with doctors are just as important as the people who go to other clinics. And I've talked to the colleague today who doesn't live in town and they don't have options in the community they live in, but work in the district. And then they're automatically, unless they're willing to drive into town each time to change doctors, they're again being forced to use Essentia facilities. And that just seems really unfair to me. So I just wanted to share that.
Thank you. Since Monday night's meeting, the board members have received multiple emails. Some of you are here, some aren't. I want to thank you on behalf of the board for submitting those emails. I have been able to read through all of them except for three that I've just received in the last two minutes. And I have pride, I believe, to respond to all of you. Today's discussion is an, was, is the opportunity for the board members to further discuss the issues surrounding the health insurance options. I am very pleased today that Dan from Medica, you're able to be here and that Rob and Jim are here, Jen are here from Marsh McLennan. As we begin our conversations today, David, is there anything that you, on behalf of the district, would like to present again and or?
I think the biggest thing is it's not something that we want to do. And when everybody comes up and say how it's going to affect them, you have to look at what the alternatives are and how they're going to affect other employees, kids, staff, everything like that, because, um, you know, the the changing of the insurance is something that's going to prevent more layoffs. So somebody that gets laid off is also going to have to have changed their health insurance because they're no longer going to have health insurance through the school district. And the good thing I always do is we want to find different solutions. We find it, want to find a different way. We've been cutting consistently and the state is forcing us to do this. The state is putting upon every single school district in the state of Wisconsin. So I don't want anybody to think that this is us just looking to save money and cut numbers because of any other reason than to try and take care of all of it.
Thank you. The other evening, we ended up with a dialogue sometimes back and forth with the community members and today I would like to keep our comments obscure ourselves. Dan or Rob, Jen, I mean, there'll be questions, I'm sure that'll be asked of you, the three of you and stuff, and I hope to the best of your ability to be able to provide more, more answers, more clarity. There will not be a decision made by the end of today. They'll have time to think about what's been presented. We have more time to make sure that we're reading through your emails. It's most important that we make the best informed decision. I know the other night I I went against one of my rules of speaking. I've always taught those around me and have expressed many times that when you make a comment, you never follow it up by the word but. And I did that. And I apologize completely. I am very conflicted on this. I know that I have a responsibility as a board member for this school district or this community that we have, our job is to serve our children. Our job is to serve you, to help you. Another part of our portion is to make sure that we and make sure that this district stays financially stable. The decisions, as I mentioned to the board members the other night, are going to be very difficult to make. And I think we have to make sure that we're checking our boxes through our lens to make sure. I appreciate Joe especially what you said. You're humans and not numbers. With that, are there, how do you want to proceed? Are there specific questions that you have for any of our members here today? Is there something else you want to see presented by them so that those in the audience can also see what we're talking about as we move along?
I have a lot of questions. I tried to take and pick a lot of the ones that were very similar in what the community and teachers and staff were asking as well. But they're all over the place. I've been taking the notes as I've been getting them, so they're in no specific order. But I think one of them is, uh, yes. I'm often teased for my handwriting. Should have been a doctor, I guess. Essentia Health Wait Time. So I am actually a part of Essentia Health and for instance, my daughter just had to cancel an appointment due to the snowstorms we just had and now it's five months out for a specialist. If we're going to be going to a narrow network, how are they going to be prepared to take on more? And are there going to be physicians that can take these people? For instance, I know somebody gave the example of dermatology is not currently taking any new patients. So how do they handle these situations if that arises? Do you have?
I mean, so Essentia should be here to answer that question because obviously I work for Medica.
Yep.
But what I can tell you is, yeah, two answers to your question. First of all, there are a number of the employees and their covered dependents here at the district who will already go to Essentia. So, so at least that subset of people isn't an increased patient base. But to that question, to the increased patient base, excuse me, it, it, those people are going to be treated no differently than anybody else trying to see Essentia. What I mean by that is, yeah, I know personally as well, dermatology, the appointments are way out there. I mean, there are provider shortages. This is a reality. But what I can tell you is the people who sign up for Essentia Choice Care, whether they're here at the school district of Superior or eighteen thousand other people that we have on that plan, they're not going to be disadvantaged. They're not going to be, you know, put on a longer waiting list than anybody else would be, whether they're covered under Medica's Passport Plan, which is our national open access network plan. St. Luke's is included in that. Whether they're covered under the G H T network, there's, it's going to be the same. Other than that, we have to have Essentia. That's a great question, but we'd have to have Essentia answer that.
Can I speak to that quick? They will not be treated different, but a new patient type at Essentia Health is much different than an established patient type. So some providers don't even take new patients in family practice or internal med. And if you are a new patient, it's a longer visit type, so it takes longer to get in with providers and if they're having X. And usually providers have a template where they only take two new patients per day or four new patients per day, depending on how new they are, if they're trying to establish their practice. So that, I think, so that's kind of, we don't know. It's unknown because if you are a St. Luke's patient and let's say you have a chronic condition and you need to establish, you might not be able to get in for two months to even establish, depending what primary care facility is. And that's not wrong. That's, that's true. Yeah.
But I mean, and it is that same dynamic.
Yeah.
How can I say this? Further up the specialty ladder you go, that's kind of a crude way to describe it, but no matter what system you're going to, whether it's St. Luke's or Abbott Northwestern, Twin Cities, Alina, you know, the further up that specialty ladder you go, the longer the waits.
Right, but you have to establish what the primary care provider could get the referral to see a specialty. So if you do already have a specialty at St. Luke's, then that does prolong that care. So that is a concern. And then the other question, just because it kind of relates to this, is I know insurance deals with the prior auth process. So what is that? How long does that take? Because I've heard that's, that can take up to thirty days for a prior auth to become the turnaround time. So if someone's
Excellent question.
Need a specialty, what is that going to look like for?
Standard turnaround time, and this is an industry standard. So, so Medica, thirty days, except in the case of an emergent situation, then there's expedited prior auth process, which is seventy two hours. You'll have an answer in seventy two hours.
And what constitutes the emergency situation?
It's, you know, a very critical medical situation that has come up.
Well, then I think about the people at St. Luke's and if, let's say, people are scheduling their established care appointments, but they get to see their St. Luke's provider one more time before. Are they going to be able to get their prescriptions? Are they going to have everything taken care of before they can get in?
Right.
With their
So, so, yeah, great question. So whenever there's a switch in carrier, no matter when that happens, you know, if somebody's getting close to the end of their prescription, then they should fill it before that, before the switch to the carrier happens. And Jen can talk about that. So what I'll say about the pharmacy networks, again, we're quoting, this is from the Department of Redundancy Department. We're quoting two different networks for the school district of Superior. One is Passport, which is a broad network. And as far as up here is concerned, that's Essentia and St. Luke's. The second network, as we're talking about right now, is Essentia Choice Care. The pharmacy network for both of those products is exactly the same. It's a national pharmacy network. I mean, I'm going to sit here and say we have every pharmacy and the phone boards in because somebody might have hung out a shingle last week and we don't know about that. But I mean, CVS, Walmart, Walgreens, Target, you know, it's the same large pharmacy network. Essentia Choice Care is as it is for Passport.
Now, the one comment that I would make about the healthcare marketplace in general, Jen and I and our team at Marsh, we have business in Eau Claire, Sparta, all throughout Wisconsin. And when David contacted me in January and said, everything has to be on the table, we can leave no stone unturned. The relationship that Medica has with Essentia where they can discount this premium by eighteen to twenty percent, that phenomenon does not exist anywhere else. I mean, we are delivering on average five to ten percent increases. So the sandbox that we're all being asked to play in, for lack of a better word, this type of narrow network product and this kind of a discounted product, I wish I had this to be able to deliver in some of those other communities where we're helping our school districts try to solve very difficult budget crisis. And the fact that you've got seventy to eighty percent of the individuals here already utilizing Essentia. So when David contacted me and said, just no sacred cows, show us everything. This seemed to make a whole lot of sense, that seven or eight out of ten, that this is going to be, this is going to work. And I totally get you, man. When you're being asked to change a provider relationship, I get it. I live with a nurse. You know, I understand and I can appreciate that you're being asked to pay a higher premium contribution if you're going to keep the ability to go wherever you want. So what we did was we just tried to, let's make sure we don't exclude anybody. Let's keep both products in play. So that's the, the concept of group health is how do we try to create a win for the vast majority of the people? So it's an imperfect task that we're asked to do day in and day out. I wish I had this product in other markets in Wisconsin. I don't. I mean, I don't have a silver bullet that I can, that I can deploy in some of these other communities where there's a twenty percent advantage and you're able to deliver over a million dollars of savings to a district that's just, they're down on their luck, man. They're looking for any possible avenue they can to try to solve their budget. This is a very difficult thing, you know, the team has been asked to solve. It's not easy. But, you know, if I, you know, knew of some magic beans that I could sprinkle on this and make everybody happy. We looked at every single carrier that's viable. We tried to do this so that we created the least amount of disruption possible. And I think that we have been transparent. We started this process in January. You folks are just learning of it now. You know, I get that, but this process and this journey that we went on, this started in January. So it takes a long time to get it, to get the carriers to the table, for them to look at the claims experience to underwrite it, but that's the process that we went through. And we are, we're trying to be as transparent as possible about all the steps and all the carriers that we investigated.
I don't know if, if all of you had a chance to read through all of the emails, but the ones that I read through were really, got me somewhat emotional because a few of them I know very well. The personal relationships that they built at St. Luke's, their medical doctor with their medical team for acute care for either themselves or for their children or other people in their families was quite loud and clear from a number of the emails that we received. So that's where I'm really struggling to try to figure out, are we better off? How do we meet those people's needs? And I just don't, I don't know how to answer that. Again, that's a, if an Essentia person was here, whoever their CEO or would be in charge, maybe they can answer that better, but that is literally struggling.
This is what you're seeing is competition playing out. That's what you're seeing. There are these two healthcare systems creating a carrot to try to get you to switch your care to that clinic system and they're doing it. You know, but they're trying to create that steerage with better discounts, better financial outcomes, and as a consequence of that, lower premiums.
But if I were one of those people that expressed it, if I could put myself in Kelly's shoes, I'm a little older now. So let's say that I was with that, that provider for fifty out of my seventy years thus far. And now I'm being asked to change. That's splattering me on the wall as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah. We all used to show up, get our healthcare. Whatever the doctor said, we took it and we didn't actually go out there and exhibit patterns of consumerism, right? We just did what they did, bought our insurance and we didn't ask a whole lot of questions. But there, the providers are being asked to be more transparent in what they charge. The No Surprises Act that was passed by the federal government mandates that they actually show you what they charge. We're being asked to be transparent in what we receive as a broker. Medica's being asked to be transparent in what their loss ratio is. It's all cards on the table. There's nothing to hide. You can dig as deep as you want into this, but really what you're seeing play out here is a competition. It's competition for patients.
And I'm, I'm all about competition and, and but I also, and maybe this is a really silly question or thought, but I also worry about like Essentia Health, they're trying to get the competition. Once they get us, are they going to become a monopoly where then we are going to, they can raise rates and give us crappy service and then St. Luke's just doesn't have a shot anymore and then we're left with only one option, period. And maybe that's, again, this isn't really
The only assurance I can give you, I can only predict here now and today. And when we go back to a carrier and say, I don't want you to buy the business. I want you to provide me a second year rate cap. They did that. I mean, so they're, they're promising not to raise rates by more than, tell me out here.
Twelve percent or potentially no more than ninety percent.
For how many years?
For the second, the second year at renewal. And you're, and to be fair to Group Health Trust, they also offered a rate cap as well. So that was part of, well, if you're going to be a finalist, only tool that I have as a consultant is to go back to those carriers and say, show me a model that proves to me that you're not trying to just buy this for twelve months. And I can't get them to go out beyond two years. So.
I just like to, we're a very unique community and we have two large hospital systems that give camps on both sides. And I have family members and employees that have gone to the other one because of lack of care. And I have family members and employees that have gone to the other one because of lack of care or performance or fill in the blank. So I have lots of family members that are diehard Saint Luke's. I have lots of family members that are diehard Essentia. And you're not gonna change their mind. And I know a lot of people have switched because of certain, so no hospital is immune from a bad doctor. No hospital is immune from change. Doctors retire, doctors move. We had, we had potential clients that were at Saint Luke's. Both, both doctors worked there. Aspiris came in and bottomed and they left. So that's, that's the reality of the world we live in. There's competition. So Aspiris is trying to gain more ground in the community. Essentia's trying to gain more ground. Everything's on the table all the time and at the cost of us as consumers of the healthcare. And I'm an Essentia person and I have lots of different things going on. I have rheumatoid arthritis. I have cardiac stuff. I see a dermatologist. So I have all that stuff. I have long wait times. I experienced that. But I haven't gone to Saint Luke's. I tried in about ten years ago and it didn't work out. So I think all of these things being said, everybody is at risk of experiencing some kind of change all the time. And it's hard to avoid that.
Nick about Aspiris. I mean, that, that is what's happening in healthcare consolidation. I mean, it's just, it is, for the rest of our lives, it's gonna be ever changing.
Yeah, and three, three years ago, we would not have brought this product in because the decrement was what, twelve and a half, twelve, twelve? So now wind the clock forward three years. Now they're seeing better financial outcomes to the tune of twenty percent. So it's, it's been beta tested. They know they're getting better financial outcomes in the Essentia system. They're passing that on with lower premiums. That, that's what has, that's really what's played out.
Financial inequality.
Yes, I mean, that's what's driving that. But I, I don't have any other weapons to deploy. I, I don't know how to solve, you know, a four and a half million dollar problem. This is, this is what I've got, you know, in terms of healthcare options that seem to meet the needs of seventy-seven percent of the people that are, that are using the Essentia system. Can't say that some people won't be disrupted. And it's not for me to decide whether or not retirees are gonna stay on or stay off. I've given options both ways. So that's the employer's decision to determine if it, determine premium contribution in retiree. I just
As far as the.
Dan's a good, Dan's a good combatant.
There was some questions on savings if the retirees were off, what that actually was. I know you guys had quoted what that would have looked like if they were not on next year's term. Can, can you tell me what that number, David?
After two years?
So what it is, it's three hundred and two thousand dollars is the difference between what? The original quote was with retirees. I'm not gonna see, like I said, we're not gonna see any of that savings for two years. Right. In order to get that savings, it has to happen.
Three hundred and two thousand dollars annually.
Three hundred and two thousand dollars total in the premium. Would that be, there is the eighty-eight percent. So that's where you get the two hundred. Retirees on a district health insurance costs around two thousand two hundred and thirty-two dollars per year. The district pays an additional two hundred and sixty-five. Savings for the district will be two hundred and sixty-five thousand six hundred and ninety-four dollars. The other portion, so the difference between that two sixty-five and the three oh two, is a savings for our current employees because their premium rates will go down. The reason, like I get a lot of people ask, retirees are paying a hundred percent of the premiums. How was that, how was that costing us any money? Insurance doesn't, the insurance premiums doesn't cost the full expense of somebody going and get, getting medical care. The analogy I've been thinking of is if you, let's say you're married and your, your significant other is a speed demon and has four speeding tickets. That other person that has zero speeding tickets could actually probably get a lower rate on their own because they are a safe driver. Well, but they are tied to that person that's with them. And so they incur higher rates because it isn't the, the premiums or if they something crash on it. The premiums doesn't cover the full amount to replace a car when you crash a car. The premiums are the risk that the insurance company is taking that you're not gonna crash. It's dependent upon all those people that didn't crash a car, they paid for the person that did. The same way with insurance. Unfortunately, retirees have a higher usage of insurance. So that's why there's that rate. And that's why premiums across the board, the healthy pay for the sick is worse.
Now, if it's one hundred retirees, that number stays the same?
Yeah, if they're gonna be any, if there's any retiree exposure on the plan, Medica cannot discount the rates. So because the folks that are on the retiree plan now are gonna be afforded uh, Cobra rights. What David is saying, you, you have eighteen months to exercise your rights under Cobra. So Medica knows that there will be retirees on the plan this next year and then half of next year. So they cannot, they can't discount the rates because they know they're gonna have retiree exposure, exposure for the next two years. Yeah, right, yeah, right.
And I realized that this two hundred and sixty-five thousand technically, because if Medica only goes out the two years with the percentage increases, technically, we don't know that that number is gonna be the same, correct? So like, we're assuming the savings right now? The number that we have right now.
That's what the savings would be if retirees were.
Right, but Medica only does for, the promise for two. Right, absolutely.
So what's the justification behind that? Because if people are retiring before sixty-five, so they're still going to be, they're gonna be insured with their district longer because people are going to work longer. So what's the, that's just kinda, it doesn't make complete sense to me, like, there's still gonna be.
To provide a discounted premium if you take thirty-four people, is it thirty-four that words? You take thirty-four people who are between age fifty-five and sixty-five off the plan, you're changing the risk profile to the better. And the carrier is willing to offer a lower premium for doing that. So you're removing a pretty big part, part of the population that drives.
Staff right now. But over ti, and over time that may go, because we're gonna have, what is their staff? Because they're gonna keep working because they can't retire, right?
If everybody, if everybody who's currently employed works until they're age eighty-five, you guys all love that. And you don't hire any younger teachers, then those rates are going to, by the time everybody's eighty-five, those rates are gonna be.
Can I ask an approximate, sorry, of what is the difference between our first year, like step one and our top step for a teaching position? Molly, do you have that?
The difference in what?
The difference in pay. Because if you've got a first year teacher and a step, the top step teacher making twenty-five to fifty thousand dollar difference. And again, we're keeping them on for an additional ten years and we are only paying two hundred and sixty-five if we've got, you know, how many, eight? If we get them off, then that covers the retiree insurance.
It's about, I think it's twenty-two thousand.
So essentially like fifteen-ish.
That's just the base. So, you know.
Yeah, I guess.
You're gonna be paying that for ten more years for.
Right.
Approximately. Less fire insurance rate because people will be older. Right now.
I did ask about, and I asked in email form, but I think it's important that the community gets questions that they've asked as well about affordable options that the district could potentially offer retirees or refer them to or group policies, that policies in ten years if we did take away, again, I'm saying if. But we are not allowed to give those options because we are not an insurance provider. So there's not, we are not licensed to do so. So we can't help in any way either. But I think that was a good question that a lot of people had. Oh, another one that a lot of people have asked if they could pay, if the teachers could pay a higher percentage and the district pay less. And Diana, you had asked that question on email and then we had gotten the results from Molly. I don't know if you wanted to talk about it.
It just wasn't significant, the amount of save, saving. So I had asked, what if the district pays eighty, eighty-six percent, staff pay fourteen percent, kind of, Mary, you brought that up, like, got the wheel spinning, but it wasn't significant enough. Basically, right?
So it's, it's on the savings the district is making now is they would have to do that high rate of what the, similar with the passport is. They would have to pay five thousand dollars extra a year to, to use, to, to get the savings.
It's another thing is what about the recent retirees, the ones who had just put in? Um, who didn't see this coming as well. I had asked about potentially getting their jobs back. And none of those positions have been filled. So maybe they could rescind their retiree. But again, I'm not saying that that's the direction. I just know that that was a question that was asked. And so that's the answer is the possibility.
Those people that are going out, they go out on the current handbook.
Just say, Noel, what prevents anybody from going and getting their own health, health insurance through the healthcare.gov or whatever else at different rates, what?
Well, you won't get a subsidy if you don't meet certain income requirements. I'm not an expert on the exchange.
So, you know, most, a lot of people get a subsidy, get, get the premium subsidized, but that's income based, based on household size, right? The flip side to that is, are you offered affordable coverage for your employer? That's a question that's going to be asked. And the affordability testing and guidelines is set every year and I can't remember the exact percentage, but it's based on.
Poverty level.
Poverty level. I think it's just under nine percent, but that is for employee only coverage. That's how it's assessed. So if your employer provides you coverage that, that for you is less than that percentage, then it's affordable. So you could still go out and get your own policy, but you wouldn't be afforded a sort of subsidy.
Yeah, there's nothing that precludes the person from waiving coverage here and going and exploring their own options.
I guess, I was curious, Fox, I was playing on that site the other night. But in all sorts of different factors in, being a thirty-five-year-old lady, being a fifty-five-year-old guy, being family, two kids, no kids, all that different stuff and getting different rights, rates with the notion that employer was offering insurance. I mean, I've seen everything from, you know, three hundred, three hundred a month to five hundred a month. But I became fifty-five, it was a thousand a month. But there's providers on there that was Saint Luke's or Saint Mary's. Medica was on there as Essentia only. But Health Partners, Security Health, all the options were there. So I, I guess that's just where I got some in my mind, why put in people just get their, going through that or what's, what's the hang up or what's the the cost for that, that, that people wouldn't wanna do that, I guess, so.
You're not saying take away all?
No, I'm not, I'm not saying, I'm just, my, I'm just curious what the hang up is, why I would, I wouldn't just say, forget school district, I'm gonna go healthcare.gov and, and pick something else up that has Saint Luke's involved or what is the case?
Subsidy if, if their income level was above a certain setting based on our household size or if they're offered coverage and supportive, well, they wouldn't get the subs. It's, it's a potential cost savings to the premium that they may be looking at.
Can I bring up a scenario that one shared with us? You have a child in college, for example, there's a child in college in Wisconsin and they looked up where would the in net, closest in-network for like a primary care provider be? And it was a hundred and thirty-seven miles away.
This is on the Essentia plan?
Yes.
And where are they going to school?
River Falls.
Well, so, so, and I spoke with somebody, I don't know, she's here today.
She's not.
Okay, so I spoke with an individual Monday evening after, after we were out in the hall and we were speaking with her. So, so here's how it works with us, with the Essentia Choice Care Plan. And, and I, I can tell you from my own personal experience how it worked for our kids, which is the other side of the coin. But in this case, River Falls is in the Medica service area. So, except in the case of emergency, and I'll get to that in a moment. If somebody is traveling, whether it's on vacation or for school or you guys have a C E class down in the cities or something like that. If you're traveling in the Medica service area and you're covered under the Essentia Choice Care Plan, you have to go to an Essentia provider to get in-network level of benefits. You can go to a non-Essentia provider, and I, I will get to emergencies in a minute. I be clear on that. You can go to a different provider. You can go to Saint Luke's, you can go to Abbott Northwestern, you can go to Gunderson down in River Falls. That will be, if it's not an emergency, non-network level of benefits. So, so for the case of college kids who live in, who are going to school in the Medica service area, we recommend, if they're on Essentia, that they have all their routine stuff done when they're home from break.
Ideally, but what if they have a chronic condition where they need to be seen more frequently? They need to establish with someone there, so it's not emergent.
Excellent. So in that case, then Essentia might not be the appropriate choice for that thing. And in which case you go with the broader network, Passport product. And, you know, there's, we got providers like crazy in that. Including me.
If, if it's really going to be a significant inconvenience for that students, then the default option should be, I'm going to take the broad network. I know I'm going to have to pay for it. But that should be the choice that, that individual makes. Also, you know, the Medica plan offers a telemedicine benefit. Lots of primary care can be diagnosed via telemedicine, the emergency care is in-network. So there are other options for those people that wanna try to save money. But when we do the open enrollment, if both products are offered, the person comes with that scenario, people on Dan's team are gonna go time out, then take, I know you don't wanna hear this, but you need to take the more expensive product if you truly have family members that are gonna use these potential non-network providers that aren't gonna be in-network in the Essentia product. They're gonna be straight up and they're just gonna say. They're gonna be straight up and they're just gonna say, that's the product that your family should pick. You're not gonna like the cost, but you're not gonna like the outcome on the claim if you take this narrow network product and it doesn't work for your family. So. Need to videotape this and send this to Washington because you guys are debating. This is just playing right here in Sperry, Wisconsin with what they're trying to solve in Washington. So not easy, not easy to try to navigate the healthcare marketplace and the impact that it has on people in our community. Uh, but the top choices that your board is being asked to deliver under very difficult financial, uh. Circumstances. Any questions amongst the, uh, board members about the retirees remaining on the insurance program and the effect, again, that monetary effect to the disk or something? See that again or?
Again, is this even a thing where retirees are paying a hundred percent of their premium? But then if they cost the district money, is there a way to say there's a percentage that they're responsible to pay to remain on there or is that not even a thing?
But the only thing you can do in leveling a cost to the retiree, the only thing you can manipulate is the premium.
Okay.
They're paying the full load.
Alright.
It's closed. I mean, that's it.
Okay.
Yeah. You can't go back after the fact and go, well, you guys part, you guys created X amount of expense. Which inflated our premiums by five. You can't do that. It, it, you're just not permitted to do that.
Cause I just hear, you know, quadruple in price and I think, huh, and they'd probably be willing to put in three, four, or five thousand dollars if they didn't have to do fifteen.
Right, I get you. I get you, right.
So it's like.
Yeah.
Let's help it.
Right.
Helping both, kind of.
Dave, just, just so I'm clear, just so I know I'm reading this right, we stayed on our current insurance plan with retirees. We're paying six point nine million dollars, correct?
Yeah, again, then.
Six point nine.
Right. For paying eighty-eight percent of the six point nine million.
Yep.
If we go to Medica. And we keep retirees, it jumps to just over seven million, right?
No.
No?
That, the seven million, that's seven zero three nine, is that what you're looking at?
Yeah.
That is the. So there is no.
Okay, so there is no option to keep retirees.
Option to take retirees off. There's no savings.
We can't.
We told Medico, we can't take retirees off due to COVID requirements. So do not even provide us with the secondary offer.
Okay, so these, these numbers are with retirees.
These are all with retirees, well, yeah, these are with.
Those two. So the five, the five point six. The five point six is the essential only. The seven million is. So now those numbers are with removing retirees. And we don't know what the number is if we did remove.
Three hundred thousand.
Oh, that's the two sixty-five, that was, okay.
But again, that's after two years and Medica only gave us the two-year cap. So we're just projecting. It's a projected number. It's not guaranteed.
So we're either looking at paying a hundred and twenty thousand more or one point two million less. Is what we're looking at. Unless we just stay the same.
It's G H T is.
Can we get that one that's thrown up on the screen?
Um, yeah, yeah. It's the Marcia McQuillan.
Page five. Did you get it on there or no? It got cold. I mean, I'm overweight, but come on.
Take a windbreaker off.
That's right.
Keep going.
Yeah, make it bigger.
Go in on the Medica ones.
Alright, there we go.
The bifocals.
Can we see the G H T? So maybe a tiny bit, so there we go. There we go. Right? That's good.
So, I see. Case breaks. So these are breaks. July of twenty fifth.
True. So one.
And Dave, with our, with our deficit, I know I've asked this before, breaking it down, the four point five. We're trying to get, trying to get to zero for. My four twenty, my four twenty-five, we're not at zero yet.
Right.
Just one point two would get us to zero or close, right?
Yes. I mean, when we're standing, you guys are.
But let's hang on, hang on, let's, let's let David finish and then let's pick up on that conversation. Thanks.
So what we're saying is, when you're saying remove retirees, we're saying remove language from the handbook. To have retirees not eligible for our insurance anymore. Retirees, every single retiree that is on there now, if every single person that's going to retire. Is going to have the option of having district insurance for eighteen months, the same way that they do right now. What it is, is it starts the clock and says, you know what, in eighteen or in, in two years. What it does is it stops anybody that retires today from joining the district insurance. Anybody that retires today is going to join Cobra, the Cobra, the Cobra plan. Which is identical to our district insurance because we pay a hundred percent, because they will have to pay a hundred percent. So there will be no loss of coverage for any retiree right now. Or any retiree that's taken, anybody that retires is always going to have that eighteen-month option.
Eighteen.
And then people who are.
When they retire.
They, like, if someone's been retired for five years and they're sixty, they get eighteen months of Cobra, right?
When they. Alright, I know that. I think the audience has answered. The rates are solid for twelve months.
Yeah.
And the premiums, right now, the retirees are baked in. Okay.
On both, on both G H T and.
Yeah, yeah. And I, I want to respect the conversation. So should I not ask my question aloud or? You know, I don't want to get you into the big, I just feel that's deceiving because it's not with retirees.
It is.
It is with.
But it's keeping us for eighteen months and then dropping us. It's not keeping us as is. It's changing.
Until you turn sixty-five, is that what you're asking?
Right, the, the rates are gonna change again one year from now.
They could go up by nine months.
What I'm saying is with retirees is a change for retirees now. Ours now is getting us to sixty-five. This really to me is deceiving, and that's why I spoke about, because it says. That means you're still gonna kick us off after eighteen months.
If you, if the board decides to not remove retirees, oh, this is the rate we get, right?
Yeah.
Regardless of what you guys do today, this is the rate we get.
Because I have to honor the Cobra obligation. So. Right, that's by law.
Yeah.
How I read that.
Yeah. And if you remove retirees today, two years when we go back, the rates would be lower.
Right.
So then they won't be, huh?
Let's see.
You'll have a.
You can see that five sixty, five, five million, six hundred thirty-one. Drop to five hundred and. Or five million and three hundred and something else. That's where the ceiling goes. So it's two years down the road. We have to do it now in order to not give retirees pulling forward the option to stay in district. They have the option to go to Cobra.
But you know, that. I know there's been talk, you know, that, that, the Act Ten has screwed everything up. And the more that I took time this afternoon to read about Act Ten. More than I'm understanding how much Act Ten has significantly limited the opportunities for teachers across the state. In, including benefit packages. More so though in their, their ability to negotiate wages. There's, there is a perception that we're hiding behind Act Ten. So with that, and the board members, I sent you, uh, a little study that I did. So. I, sixteen schools that I referee in. So I got ahold of all sixteen schools and I wanted to know what, what they currently are. Three others besides us allow their teachers to stay on through the age of sixty-five. Now, that, that's a small. Group of, of, uh, a, a sample here. Um, now, I forgot my numbers because they didn't call it up.
How many were there?
No, the, well, sixteen, but, um. Who, who, who are the Knowles? There were.
Three Knowles or four Knowles?
Yeah. And one of them was Northwestern.
Northwestern, Drummond and Spooner were Knowles.
So what schools did I pick? So harder than North, um. A word, Northwestern, Ashland, Cumberland, Cameron, I don't know. Chippewa Falls is in the, Chippewa Falls is in the Big Rivers Conference and I had a chance to talk to Chad today from there. Very interestingly enough. In two thousand nine, two thousand eleven, when Act Ten hit in that area, they foresaw it. They went with a split system. People that were in the system for fifteen years prior to Act Ten, they're covered all the way to sixty-five. People that were hired after that point, they still have a portion of their insurance paid for. And then after, can't remember how many, it was fifty-seven and fifteen years and they were on a different program and stuff. And it, is it, is it something that? We, we've talked about not having the ability to, to sit and have more conversations. I know that Amy was open to it. She and I have had multiple conversations about it. But it's these types of things that we move forward. I, I'm glad you're explaining that the retirees are still on here. However, knowing what our, what our contract said, and I include myself with you because I did see contracts as well. And that guaranteed me until I was sixty-five to have school district insurance. I fully understand. As we move forward, however, we cannot financially continue to absorb this. Whoever this falls, whether it's our current board or the new board members, it's gonna fall on somebody to have to sit down. With, with a number of people, community members, insurance people, people like yourselves again, just to get more clarity and understanding what we're doing. We are going to have to make a decision at some time in this, in the school district of how we're going to operate moving forward. It's, it's inevitable. There has been talk about an operating referendum. We've talked about that. There were. In our emails, people, questions, have we talked about, um, operational referendums? Yes, we have. We have, but not at the point of sitting down, having an open community meeting to talk about. Uh, operational referendum because of the fact that. My God, people with kids and daycare, there, there's so many variables that are, that are going to be hitting that. There were a number of other things. Did we look at our sports? Um, we had an opportunity to fill out a survey and to, to provide Amy with other areas that, um. We were looking at to pass for possible cuts. One of the first ones that I sent out and, and realized that Ellen, you were already on it and stuff, but transportation. Use, use of coach buses. We made it a luxury in this school district for a number of years and I was one that was involved in it. Cause I thought it was really cool that when we went to tournament games that our teams could travel in a coach bus. However, knowing back in nineteen seventy-two, when I went to the state baseball tournament. Um, John Stupak in a yellow bus drove us down to Stevens Point. Sorry about the history, but did we look at that? Yes. So. Ella is already taking care of that. What I asked her yesterday is to provide us some type of information so that we could see. The coach bus, bus costs this much. The yellow bus costs this much. But in between what they've done is that there's going to be a responsibility of the teams. If you were a head coach of the football team and you're going to. Eau Claire Memorial and stuff and you want a coach bus, that has come out of your fund base. We looked at cutting sports. We looked at, um, elimination of possibly all the cheerleading squads, the dance and everything. So. We have started to look at multiple things. Are there more things? Yes, there are. Um, a number of you pointed that out in your emails to us and those are things that I have to share with Amy. Because we try not to surprise ourselves with too many things. So. You're gonna be asked on Monday, you know, to make, to make this decision. Retirees are on there, but that still doesn't answer the commitment that the district made a long time ago to them to keep them on.
Can I ask a question or just?
Linda, I'm, I'm, I'm really sorry. I mean, I really kind of.
I, I don't even want.
You could, you could, Linda, you could even send that in an email to me.
Okay. I'm not looking for an answer though.
No. I appreciate that. Class of seventy-two.
I think it's important to follow up on what Steve says though, is that this isn't. Uh, us board versus them.
Absolutely.
District.
I absolutely.
It's, it's not necessarily. You know, them making the decision and, and asking us to approve it necessarily. Like Steve said, it's. It's all of us looking at where can cuts be made? How can we get ourselves out of a hole? And, you know, just going back how he was talking about, you know, everything's on, everything's on the table. It's, you know. You know, pay raises, is it cutting sports? Is it cutting programs in the schools? Is it laying off staff? Is it? Is it freezing salary? Is it changing the step program? Is it, is it going to afford a, uh, school week? Um. So when we take the survey, we, we give our opinions. You know, at, at least for me personally, when I first took the survey and offered my thoughts. You know, I, 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 I thought one direction. And then you start coming to these open meetings, you know, knowing that we can't have any discussion amongst ourselves until we get to a meeting. So there is no open thought, no, no open discussion, no hearing other views. It's only my view when we get to a meeting. And so when the meeting comes, it's, it's not that I'm trying to. Necessarily make it seem like I am against the district or the district is, is against me or anybody here. It's. Maybe sometimes my view changes once I start hearing voices and. Community, not voices, but I start hearing. Hearing a community speak, start being able to hear the staff speak, start being able to hear what the rest of the board has to say or what Dave says or Amy. And again, I'm not, I, I don't want to give the impression that it's us against them. It's. This is our only shot to have discussion and, and really. Try to figure out what's going on and how to make the best, best decision. And, and sometimes. And I can go to Amy and say, hey, I want to do this, but then a week later I've changed my mind. And it's, it's nothing against them. It's, it's just. When we finally have this ability to have a discussion. And even this isn't, doesn't really feel like a real discussion to me because we have an audience of however many here. And we can't really truly just go back and forth on stuff and be candid with each other. We can't. Um, I will say, you know, to prefer, you know, I don't know how many emails we got. Nick said it's somewhere around a hundred. I don't know. It's, it's a lot of emails. I've read them all. I've read all the documents attached. I haven't responded to any of them yet. I. It's a lot of emails you go through. I will at some point. Um. But reading those emails, again, every email I read changes my mind again. You know, and I, I'm, I'm stuck on. On these issues and it's nothing against them. It's nothing against anybody here, but I, I get stuck on issues and it's more difficult for us because. We are the elected officials that have to make the decision. We have to take the brunt of whatever choice we make, whether it's good or bad. And, and it's difficult.
And I don't, I think one of the biggest things too is just like what Ed said, it's not us versus them. It's not good guy, bad guy. Um, and I hate to even have the board pitted against different organizations, the teachers, the admins. It just. We are a team. And when one of us fails, we all fail. And we shouldn't want to see struggles and failure. We should want to encourage one another and see success. And so I believe that Amy, Dave, Molly, anybody else who has to come and make these recommendations. I believe it's their duty to present every option. They have to. They don't want to. It's not what they necessarily agree with, but they, it's their job. To present things to us. And then we have to make the final decision, not for everything, but for these things. And then we have to make the final decision, not for everything, but for these things.
As far as our personal discussion here is, you know, I'm. You know, it's, if I want to take retirees off, you know, after all this discussion, no. And it's like I told Dave and Amy several times. Hope you're not mad at me, but you know, it's I go back and forth on the survey. Did I put that as a top option? Yes. Um, because I don't want to take away sports from the students. I don't want to take away programs from the classrooms. I don't want to take away more staff. But now, yeah, I'm wishy washy, I guess, but I'm not necessarily in favor of removing retirees anymore at this point, not for two hundred sixty five thousand dollars. I want to make it clear, it's not. You know. It it was an option that I put in the survey for you guys. So it's not you guys telling me to get rid of retirees. It's it's us collectively saying, what can we do?
And in the survey presented, we were given different options. And I think that when I personally ranked them, it wasn't saying I would vote this way or I would. But I thought that retiree, taking retirees off insurance needed to be discussed. And that's all that was. The information that we were sprung with was the rates and things, and that was hard because that's a normal process. But again, we didn't have that time to process.
Is what's the all, what's the alternative?
Even the referendum stuff. I mean, I want, I think the discussion has to start. Does that mean I'm in favor of a referendum? No, but again, we have to talk about all of our options here as a district. So and and do I think we could have probably maybe learned and done things better, you know, with the retirees? I don't know what's normal and what's not, like sending an email, a letter out to retirees that, hey, this is on the docket. Come and speak to us. This is the potential that's happening. Maybe that would have felt better. I don't know what is normal to do, but just being kind and considerate of our retirees who put in years and years of service. So I mean, personally, I'm sorry that it feels like it wasn't transparent. You know, again, we can learn from this and do better. Um, I think that no matter what happens going forward, we need to communicate better with what's going to be happening and some changes that could take place. But and even I think that whether we vote, if we vote to keep retirees on, I think this does need to be a consideration each and every year. And maybe there needs to be something written in where new teachers from now on, moving forward, similar to Chippewa Falls, maybe we need to get things where this is not going to be assumed forever. I I I don't, I don't know. Again, conversation just happening about it. I mean, that would be fifty years down the line now, but then we wouldn't see savings for that long, but.
I think if we decide, what we decide with retirement, there needs to be a little bit longer of a plan. So you have people who are, you know, maybe fifty three, fifty four, and they were going to retire, and that was their plan, and they're making life plans right now. There needs to be a little bit more of a, you know, a long term plan than just more of a short term plan.
And maybe that option, where if you've been here less than fifteen years, or that's something we can talk about being an option where the newer teachers have this long, and if you've been here long enough, you have till sixty five.
There are some other variables.
Option, that's for sure.
Some other variables in that report and stuff. And and even getting a hold of somebody like Rice Lake and stuff, Mr. Probston there, who I know pretty well. You know, seeing how how are they doing it? How are they making it work where they still have the opportunity for their retirees to stay um through the age of sixty five? I know speaking with one other person in Rice Lake. One of the things he did point out, he said, well, they took, they looked at the longevity. They took myself as an example. I was ready to retire at fifty seven, and if I worked until I was sixty five, here was my cost to the school district. At that same time, if I retired, they have the plan to stay on, and here was what my cost was to the district. So those are, those are the types of things that we need to have more time to to look at. Information that that David and Amy has has put out. It is what it is. There's there's no buying it numbers. There's there's nothing to hide as as far as what we finally got to see and to discuss. The reality is we're we are in a tough situation. You you can blame the state. They are part of this doggone mess. Yep, we were very lucky to have our S R funds to help us. Nick asked a question early on um before the meeting started. And we stayed at the ten thousand dollar level that we had prior to COVID. And where we are now, we'd be in deeper debt, much deeper debt than where we are right now. And we got this wonderful once in a lifetime, according to our our one person here, Easta here, of a big influx of money for our students. We got eleven thousand, and the private voucher people got thirteen thousand. You know, that's what we deal with.
Sometimes I don't know, like the S R funds were great, but it kept us afloat here, holding on to a lot more teachers and staff than maybe we should have, and now it's just a now it's drastic. If we would have made cuts gradually, would that have made this any better? I don't know. It would have.
Good one.
And that's why, like the S R funds allowed us to keep.
Yes, your funds.
Sixty five, seventy more people than we needed number wise with our kids.
Two things last year.
Yeah.
And then it wouldn't have felt this way.
Three years from now.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
They're trying to prioritize E S M L S S teachers. A E M L S, you know, it won't be an acronym. Nick, will you write that down?
B M L S S.
Yeah, A C D E F G, but the value that they brought to our district during after the pandemic. We had a difference in a program at the high school with the credit retrieval, the way that was changed. A significant change that that made in the kids' lives up there, but that was a problem. The thing that we could no longer afford to keep. It just.
But we got used to it then. I mean, and now it's like taking away everything, and now. I mean, these teachers, I think about the pairs especially. I just don't know what's going to happen.
And I'll say real quick, because I haven't said anything except for there was hot and fat earlier. Um, so I figured I should say something, you know, and going back to what Steve said, not Steve, Ed. Um, you know, about us discussing, open discussion, like it is really hard seeing in front of a group of people and saying what you're thinking, right? Because if I said everything I thought, like, like, and that's why I've tried to stay silent with a lot of stuff, because I think out loud, that's generally how I I do it. So, you know, being able to sit here and just have this, it's been helpful for me. I I know that for sure, and obviously Monday is going to happen all over again. It's hard knowing. You know, that there's only, you know, as far as the retirees go, I think I could vote on the retiree thing if we separate it, right? If we separate these these things. Okay. As far as insurance stuff, I can't, but it's hard to know that there's only one, two, three, four, four people that can vote on something so important. That's like, that's that's hard to deal with and and cope with. You know, especially knowing in a month from now, we'll have a full board of seven people, and it's an extra person. I mean, that that that's hard. So especially, and also especially knowing, like, and feeling like this process was rushed, even though in some ways there's not a lot you can do with it. So. You know, we, like, like everybody said, we got a lot of emails. I read them all. I responded, I think, to everything on Monday and Tuesday, then I started drowning Wednesday, Thursday with them, for sure. And I I get emails all day too, you know, for for work. So um I will say I really appreciate it, the perspective from, you know, teachers, admin, retired teachers, you know, all that. It's it is really important to hear from you guys. And uh, you know, I went, I went home Tuesday night, Monday night. My my wife is pissed at me, you know, she's a she's a teacher, and she wasn't happy with some of the things I said. I was like, okay, I love going home to that, you know, so yeah, I'll get in trouble for saying that if she's watching this. But uh, I I do appreciate, you know, what you guys have said, um, you know, you guys bringing the the information and, you know, you guys as well. It's it's not, it's not easy for anybody. You know, and I, thinking out loud, you know, just just for for Monday, I'm I'm leaning more towards the ad with the retirees as well, especially thinking that like this is a two year thing, and if we do decide to go to referendum, and granted, that's an if, passing is another if. That we're going to take away something that we could easily had six months from now potentially and and be able to pay for. That's really hard for me to reconcile it.
Here's here's the reality, though. If, are we stuck at one point four, one point?
Yes.
Something, whatever.
Seven eight.
One seven, you're after that.
You know. Be honest, this Medica et cetera gets us down close to zero. I would say close. And our job is to balance the budget and at least get to zero for now. I'm not happy with it. I don't like it. By the same token, removing the retirees doesn't get us to zero, doesn't do anything to get us to zero for this year or next year. Um, so I guess I don't, I personally don't see as why we should continue the discussion with retirees right right now. I think we should have discussions on it, but not necessarily cutting the retirees because it's not affecting our budget right now.
Are you suggesting that that be removed then from the agenda?
Well, I'll I'll suggest it on Monday, but um we're not going to make any decisions tonight.
And this stays the same if that is removed.
Right.
This is all the same, even if Cobra is not, it's offered.
Amy, when is open enrollment? May?
I just think, I just think there's more time to to look at the retiree stuff and figure something else better. But.
We we are.
Still, hey, me, we still got the medical insurance in general to deal with.
Right, we're just still.
And and again, I I struggle, I really struggle. But if anybody is watching any board meetings, I'm, I've been all about the money and getting to zero and not having extra expenses, something like that. And you know, closing Lake Spirit was one of the hardest things I had to do, which I feel like I had to do on this board. I'm a part of the reason for that, okay? Redeciding boundaries. I thought it can't get harder. We do boundaries, and it gets harder again. I'm on the board. I'm a reason for that, okay? I didn't think it can get harder. Now we're dealing with insurance. Here we are again. I'm going to be a reason for that. I'm on the board. Okay.
What's next?
What's next?
I I hope there's no next, but there is.
Referendum discussion.
But but the problem, but the problem is even if we get to zero, we still start at two point whatever next year. And even if we get that two point whatever next year down to zero, we do it all again the next year after that. And insurance goes up again next year, the year after that. And unless the state does something or somebody else does some extreme. You know, and the extreme might be a referendum, you know, Amy provided some numbers with referendum, sixty one percent passed. Now, so do the math. It's a considerable amount that didn't.
Yeah.
And they were close. The ones that passed seemed to be fairly even.
And we know, and we know, we know that's a gamble. If we fail, there's a gamble there. Um, so there's no easy choices to be made. And so I I don't know. I don't see, I don't see the retiree thing having to be made up right now, next month, Monday. I don't I don't see that as being, we got to do that right now. The the insurance, I think, is going to be the difficult task on Monday night.
Agreed, but I will always, I will say too, you know, with retiree stuff, it's like, if if it is next year, like, you know, you guys get to live the nightmare again.
Right.
From now.
Right.
Two years from now, and that's that's tough. Um, so it would be nice to be able to explore all the options and figure out something longer term.
Put a long term plan in, right?
True adventure. Yep. And I think just making everybody aware that this is going to be something that has to be looked at every year, so plan for the worst, hope for the best, I guess, because we don't know. None of us know. Is this something with the insurance? I still, I don't feel super comfortable with only four voters for retirees and the insurance questions. We've got two new board members coming on. That would bring us to six voters. We've gotten this information pretty much the same time everybody else has. And I feel like this is something that they're going to face in their three year term. Is this something that we could call a special meeting so that we have two more voters on?
Oh, it only brings to five.
Five.
Who else?
I'm late, yeah.
Well, she's leaving, so she's she's.
No, but Sarah and Sarah are coming on, so it would be six, or Laura.
That's five.
Oh, with one, yeah.
Still changes the whole dynamic of people not being part of the discussion. Not hearing everything, not getting the
Hundred and forty emails.
Five hundred emails that we got.
You mean, you don't want to forward all those?
In the last couple days.
You sound like Brooke now.
I do apologize for not responding, but this, it's a lot, so.
It's hard to respond uh without a generic response to a hundred and forty emails, but I think everybody here can say that they took the time to read them and I think that's what our days have been consumed with.
Absolutely.
With heavy hearts.
This is, this is a difficult decision, but everybody up here cares a lot about how we have to make this decision and who it affects. We read the emails and we hear your guys' stories, and we take it to heart and we feel that. That doesn't alleviate our decision making. So we still have to take all that in and make a decision for the district.
And Amy and Dave and Molly have done a phenomenal job giving us this option, not that it's what everyone loves, but yeah.
And exploring all the options.
And exploring all the options.
Upset.
And it's not them against everybody, like you guys were saying, it's not them doing this to somebody. If I have a solution for our district, stay afloat. This is one of the options that is pretty significant. It's very hard to hear and see the people. Again, you're not numbers. You are people with lives, and that matters.
We are the same. We are, we are the same, so.
But if it's, but if it's not this. It's sports, it's programs, it's staff, it's it's something's got to replace this if this doesn't happen. I mean, that's 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 the reality.
A lot more things.
And there'll be other people just like you.
So what is that? What is that going to be? I don't know.
Right. And then either way, no matter what we vote, there's going to be somebody that is upset or hurt, no matter what.
Can I just say thank you to you three for coming to this?
Very nice, again.
I I think I'm right. I think your transparency to all of these people is remarkable. And you have a very good administration. They are looking under every stone to see what's out there in the marketplace. And like I said Monday night, I'll say it again. You put a very good product out. I have three kids that graduated from Superior. They're all doing great because the active employees and the retirees did a great job. So um I care about this as much as you do. So.
And and thank you, and I would just add, I've been, I've been selling health insurance since nineteen eighty seven. That's a long time. And I have never truly been in a process like this one. I mean, these are difficult decisions, and you guys are approaching it, all of you, I think. Commendable, I don't know what the education is, but it's very impressive, difficult to be difficult and impressive.
Commendable. I don't know what the adjective is, but it's very impressive, difficult to be difficult and impressive.
I think that's part of it is like what Nick was saying. This is uncomfortable. And the other night, talking about raises and the retirees and the insurance, that's super uncomfortable. Really uncomfortable. That's not normal to talk about with people in public. It's just not. You don't go around talking about it. But I think it's healthy and it's important. And we as a board, all of our words, everything is recorded. Whatever you say could be torn and ripped to shreds. And so it's really hard to sit up here and be vulnerable like that. And I can understand why passports, perhaps it may be easier not to talk, maybe easier just to vote. But I think we owe it to our teachers and our district to do so. So that's why we do this.
And I think, I just want to say thank you to all the emails and for like standing up to be so vulnerable in front of your cohort, in front of everyone here, like in the emails that you put yourself out there to let us know how this affects you guys individually, and that, thank you guys for that.
Anything else?
Don't forget to come back on Monday. We're fun.
Thank you very much for everybody being here. Do not need a motion teacher.
Just had to.